A case study and we're looking at the parable in Luke chapter 15 of the last thing. So the last son, the lost coin and the lost sheep. And we are currently looking at the lost sheep. We're doing a three-pronged approach in this study where we are diagnosing some of the problems or illnesses or ailments that we see in the characters. We are correlating those illnesses or ailments to ourselves. And then we are prescribing solutions to how we can deal with these problems that we may have or prevent them in the future. So we started with the sheep and the first diagnosis that we provided was scatterbrain syndrome. And we looked at that in depth. We looked at cases in the Bible. We looked at what it meant, a lack of clarity in direction and focus. And we saw that as Christians, this stems in our own lack of clarity in regards to scripture and direction in regards to what God would want of our lives. And we diagnosed it, we correlated and we prescribed certain measures. So we moved on to what we call the bark bug, which is what we're looking at now. So we look at the bark bug and we saw the bark bug in sheep being hesitation, unwillingness or course correction when sheep encounter shadows or dips in the ground. And that stemmed from sheep having poor depth perception. We correlated that to us as Christians, being the doubt and worry that we suffer from when we cannot see far ahead of us, when we cannot see beyond our own judgment or perception, when we cannot see beyond our own capabilities. And we are now looking at some prescriptive methods. And the one that we looked at on Tuesday is the pill of presentence. And the pill of presentence. We said that we need to be present to the presence of present presence. And that means I have to have less to worry about than I thought. He said, concern myself with only what can benefit the present situation. His worry only makes matters worse and deal with problems as they present themselves and try not to create problems in my head. And that is where we ended last on Tuesday. So we have an exercise that I want us to do now that is in relation to the pill of presentence. So the exercise, the first thing I wanted to do, so you're going, this is a pen and paper or phone and typing or computer and typing exercise. It's going to take some writing on your part. So my daily dose, I want you to write down 10 things, material or immaterial that you are grateful for in your life presently. So write down 10 things, whether they are material things or immaterial, like friendship or love or forgiveness from someone, write down 10 things that at this moment that exist in your life you are grateful for. That is the first thing you're going to do. The second thing, my daily don't, you're going to write down one thing that you are currently worried about or worrying about that you shouldn't be worrying about. And when you write it down, I want you to draw a line through it. So that is your daily don't. And then the other aspect, I want you to write down one thing that you are currently making worse than it actually is by adding anxiety and draw a line through it. So you're going to write down 10 things that you are currently grateful for that are exist in your life. And then you're going to write down two things, one thing that you're currently worrying about that you shouldn't be worrying about, and one thing that you are making worse than it actually is by adding anxiety. And those two things, when you write them, you're going to draw a line through it. If you cannot think of any of those things, then you are blessed beyond belief and that is wonderful. But for myself and those who may think of those things, then that is what we're going to do. After we have completed this, I'm going to ask individuals to share two things from their daily dose list. And if you wanted to share one thing from your daily don'ts. As I said, these exercises are primarily for us to benefit on a personal level, but I also want us to benefit interpersonally. So don't feel compelled to share if you don't want to, but the avenue will be open to sharing. So given that is a list of 10 things, I think we should be able to do this in seven minutes. So I'm giving you seven minutes to compile this list. Try and be as specific as you can. So rather than just saying life, think of one of the things within your life specifically that you are particularly grateful for. I think that that helps us to get a better understanding of how wonderful things are. So seven minutes, I'm going to do this with you as well. So let's get to work. Four minutes remaining.
Give me, you can go back to the slide please.
I'm on the slide.
No, yeah, prescription.
Can't see now?
Thank you.
One and a half minute remaining. All right. So that is our seven minutes of time. I hope that even if we haven't necessarily finished, that we have answered enough to share and that we'll have the opportunity to finish up in our spare time. So what I'm going to ask now participation wise is that we start with our daily dose list. So I'm just going to ask individuals to share one or two things. I had said two initially, but if you only want to share one, that's fine as well. One or two things that they have on their daily dose list. So just raise your hand and then I'll, I'll point you out. All right. So we'll start with Sister Smith. Go ahead.
My first one, I'm happy and very grateful that all my children are members of the household of faith and their spouses. So that's one.
Wonderful. You want to share another or just that one?
Yes, I'm also grateful for good health at this moment.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Sister Althea.
Okay.
Go ahead.
You can put me like you, you know, that.
No problem.
I'm thankful for the technology that has allowed us to, you know, reach out to our fellow Christians during, you know, times when it's difficult like we're doing now. And I'm also thankful for work and having, you know, employment that has provided the opportunities to come to Jamaica and other places.
All right. Excellent, Brother Lacan. Go ahead, Brother Smith.
Okay, I'm grateful for the opportunity to impact lives. I tend to write stuff and share things and have webinars and so on, like now life. So that's one. And sight, I'm grateful for sight, the ability to actively see. So I can watch sports, I can write, I can create, as I said.
Excellent, Brother Smith. Anybody else wants to share?
Yes, Stephen.
All right, go ahead, Sister Nandala.
Well, Brother Smith and Sister Smith said something that I'm grateful for. Brother Smith talked about seeing, but I also had added the other faculties of hearing, touching, smelling and tasting. I think those are so very important and very good blessings from God. And Sister Smith mentioned health and strength, but I'm also very grateful for the things that I've learned from my children and also for God's forgiveness for my sins. There are lots of other things too, but I'll just mention those.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. That and my mind in Bible class knows that they can also reiterate the things they have learned from their children. Go ahead, Sister Sadia.
With you. Grateful for my wife and for my children.
Okay. Go ahead, Britannia.
I'm grateful for life, meaning being able to see another day by God's will and for my job.
Okay. Sister Paula.
I'm grateful for God, unconditional blessings, everyday blessing, making up his morning going to, it's going to work, coming back in. I'm grateful for marriage, for my marriage. I'm just giving God thanks for family. Yeah.
Excellent. Go ahead, Kim.
I'm grateful for Marlon and I'm grateful for my job and opportunity to help people, really.
Okay. Anybody else? Or I should share my two? All right. I am grateful for friendship. I have some amazing friends, many of whom, well, everybody in here falls in that category, but those who are closest to me, you know your names, I'm not calling them unless I get in trouble for who name don't get called, but for the support, for the guidance, for the encouragement, for the bond, for the sharing of fun that we have. Thankful for my friends. I'm also thankful for this avenue, Bible class, just being the Bible class teacher creates the necessity to study. And it's not, it's not the best situation where you realize that your studying has been lacking when you now have to start teaching, but at least having started and having begun studying more deeply, you recognize, one, how beneficial studying the word is, and two, the necessity of it. A lot of the times we underestimate how easily we can be, can drift, how easily we can be cast away because of the struggles in life. And the Bible tells us how important it is to study the word daily and being forced to do so as a result of this Bible class, maybe force isn't the best word, but it has reinforced that the importance of it and something I encourage all of us to do. Kirk, I saw your hand. What you change your mind? Okay, Kirk. Changed his mind. All right. So now the second one, my daily don'ts. So just going to ask, you don't have to necessarily share both of them. If you can share one of them, whether it be the first or the second one, that will be helpful. So let's raise your hand if you want to share one of your daily don'ts. Whilst, okay, go ahead, Sister Smith.
You're asking what am I currently worrying about, right? Will I survive COVID?
Okay.
I'm just giving one.
I think it does the job. I think it does the job. Everybody, if it wasn't written down, then I think it's going to be written down now. Go ahead, Britannia.
I'm currently worried about school and probably shouldn't, but school.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, I wait to see some hands that can tell you one that I am making worse than it actually is by adding anxiety. So I cannot find my NCB debit card and I am starting to presume where I may have lost it and the struggles of the process to get a new one. And that is adding, is making the situation worse because of the anxiety that I'm adding that I shouldn't. Go ahead, David.
Future, so my future, what's next in my life? And the children's future, you know, their habits, their character, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I'm sure if we watch the news, we'll see the dire situation going on in a lot of the school systems, especially in the rural areas or the areas that don't have as much resources as others. It is really, really a trying time for a lot of individuals. Go ahead, Sister Kim.
I guess David said what I was going to say, but yes, I am too worried about my future, which quite frankly I shouldn't be, because if I know who holds a future and who holds my hand, then why am I worried? But yeah, I worry daily about my future.
I mean, I don't, I don't want, or Brother Smith, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, decision making, am I making right decisions? And you know that if you are not in a stable place when you make decisions, then the quality of your decision making goes down. So that, that would be, that's supposed to two of them.
Thanks much for sharing, Brother Smith. Anybody else before we move on? All right. Well, thank, thank you everyone for, for sharing. The point of this exercise is to, one, bring to focus. Oh, go ahead, Sister Paula. Just sing your hand.
Okay, I put up my hand late. I was worrying about, always worrying about things. And it, and it really affected me mentally, spiritually in every way.
It's understandable, Sister Paula. And as I said, we don't want to make light, the attempt of this exercise, especially when we're looking at this prescription method, is not to make light of, of worry as though it is something that, you know, you just decide you're not going to worry and then it goes away. Or it's only, it only occurs when you have been living in a way that is displeasing to God. Most of the more sound characters that we find in, in the Bible struggled with worries, struggled with doubts, struggled with anxiety at some point in their life. And as human beings, we are naturally going to struggle with the same. It is ensuring that when we recognize that this is something that is affecting us, that we take the right steps. And that is the aim that we're trying to, to, to come to now. Hold what are the right steps when I find myself in this situation? As I said, the first prescriptive method, which is the pill of presentence, and we call it a pill because it needs to be taken daily. It needs to be taken daily. Reminding ourselves every day of the things that we have to be grateful for can help us to recognize that the need for worry is not as great as we think it is. Go ahead, Sister Smith.
Can I add one thing to that? There's a passage that says, be anxious about nothing but by parent supplication with thanksgiving. That thanksgiving is so important. When you look back in your files and look back at the records and see how God has come through for you many times, you know, it just erases that worry and that anxiety. I just wanted to add that.
Excellent point, Sister. Sometimes I wonder if teaching this class is necessary, because every time somebody makes a comment, it is a slide that is in the future. But excellent point. I'm going to look into how important thanksgiving is, not just to be grateful, but also in reinforcing the fact that God comes through for us. So we're going to look, we look at the pill of presentence, we're going to look now at the second pill. And the second pill is the pill of past providence, pill of past providence. And the pill of past providence essentially encourages, encourages us to look at what God has done for us in the past. So the pill of present is, is to help us to look at what we have right now, the things to be grateful for. But the pill of past providence is to look at the things that God has done for us in the past. And we're going to look at some scriptures. We're going to need one reader, so just raise your hand for this one for me, please. Psalm number 40. Go ahead, Sister Smith.
Getting my points. Psalm 40, verse one. I waited patiently for the Lord and he inclined to me and heard my cry. Two, he also brought me up out of a horrible pit, out of the Mary clay, and set my feet upon a rock and established my steps. And three, he has put a new song in my mouth, praise to our God. Many will see it and fear and will trust in the Lord. Amen.
Excellent reading, Sister Smith. I have five points for the person who can raise their hand and sing the song that, the song that we have based on the scripture. Go ahead, Natasha. What you change your mind?
I know, I know the Mary, the Mary clay verse.
I can sing.
He lifted me up.
Out of the Mary.
He played, yeah.
He set my feet.
Upon a rock. And that is why I love him so. My Savior came down, down, down. My Savior came down, down, down and lifted me up, up, up.
Natasha picked the one point for effort. Um anybody can can give me a more, a more stable rendition?
Yes, I can sing with.
Alright, go ahead, Brother Smith.
For the Lord, he inclined unto me. He heard my cry, he heard my pain.
That's it.
I waited for the Lord, he inclined unto.
Should I continue? That's that's sufficient. Brother Smith, why was I completely sure that the song that you were going to sing was going to be a song that I didn't know? I was a hundred.
Song book.
We go Brother Smith, we find the actual song for this that I do not know.
This is singing that K C choir, you need to go to the right school.
By right school, you mean W R I T E? But um so I'm pretty sure that that is the original.
No, that's not fair, no, that's a famous, famous um.
I'm not, I'm not, Brother Smith, this is my ignorance, this is not, this is not um you being incorrect at all.
But this is signed on, I know it.
I'm sure Brother Junior, Brother and Sister Junior probably know it as well. Um.
Maybe not, it's not necessarily someone singing at church, but.
Anybody knows the one that Natasha was trying to sing and wanted to get some points for the team as well? Go ahead, Sister Paula.
He lifted me up.
Alright, okay. He lifted me up from the Mary clay. He planted my feet on the rock to stay. And that is the reason why I sing and I shout. My Savior came down, down, down and lifted me up, U P, he lifted me.
No, no, pull up, well done, Paula, well done. Alright, um mind you, it's a phrase I hear in On The Rock To Stay, I always heard it on the King's Highway, but I'm sure that that's that's just Jamaican making up lyrics that you can't remember where it go. So well done, well done, thank you everybody. So um whether it be Brother Brother Smith's song from eighteen forty-two or the one that we are, I think are more familiar with. A lot of us.
Goes back to David, sir, goes back to David with the harpist, okay.
I think everything goes back to David, which is what I was going to say. All of these songs stem a lot of the songs that we sing, a lot of the choruses, even if they don't directly word for word translate to the Psalms. A lot of them take their inspiration from the words of the Psalms. And a lot of the passages that we're going to look at are going to be Psalms. And I I I found it so so wonderful, the way David uses the language, uses a lot of literary devices in his Psalms. When I when I look too much in the literature part of it, I feel like there's a lot for us to garner from looking at these passages in specifics. So we're going to start with Psalm chapter forty and see what we can, we can learn in regards to um the pill of past providence. So um ignore the one reader there, I have one question. Can anyone tell me what is significant about all the words highlighted in green? Points will be given, of course.
Verbs.
Go ahead, Natasha. Oh, and then Brother Smith, sorry.
Um.
Words.
Uh I think it, I I was gonna say it's past tense.
Alright, that's what I wanted to hear. Although they are all verbs, I was more concerned about the fact that they are all past, they are all in the past tense. So inclined, heard, brought, set, established and put are all past tense verbs, meaning these actions have already been carried out. And the point of past, the pill of past providence is to look back on what God has done in the past. We're going to look at the passage more intricately now and see what we can learn from the words used and the inspirations shared. Alright, so verse one, I waited patiently for the Lord and he inclined to me and heard my cry. The word waited patiently, I think that's quava. And the verb means to bind together, perhaps by twisting. So it means to bind together or essentially to to make two things connect more than likely by twisting them together. You probably say, how does, how does that make sense? So in the literal, in the literal sense, it means to collect. So there are two things, one thing collects the other thing by binding itself with that thing. Figuratively speaking, it means to expect. So essentially, one thing believes that something else will bind itself with it. So the literal sense is the binding, the figurative sense is essentially the expectation of said binding. So when the passage says, I waited patiently for the Lord, think of the idea of extending yourself with the expectation that God is going to bind himself to you. That is the kind of patient waiting. The deep expectation that you will collect, there shall be collection, there will be binding together. It's not just a sitting down and waiting in the hopes that something might happen. It's a deep expectation, essentially to the extent of collecting. There's a confirmation that this is going to happen. That is what David is speaking about when he says he waited patiently for the Lord. He knew that God was going to meet him, he knew that they they were going to be bound together. And then it says, and he inclined to me and heard my cry. So the word inclined is nata. And it's a verb and it means to stretch or spread out. Can also mean to bend, to hold out, to extend, to offer. And the potency behind this word being used is that it shows God's willingness to meet us where we are. God doesn't necessarily say, for me to provide assistance, you need to come to me. He is willing to bend, he's willing to stretch out, he's willing to extend himself to us. That's that's powerful, that knowing that when we are struggling, God is willing to meet us, even if I can't get up and reach out to God, God is willing to extend himself to me. The comfort that that provides, the assurance that that provides in my deepest struggles, when I feel like I don't have the strength, when I feel like I don't have the energy, knowing that God will bend extend himself, stretch out to meet me there, it's powerful. But it aligns itself with patient waiting, it aligns itself with expectation. We have to believe, we have to be willing to bind ourselves to God when he extends for him to extend himself. Doesn't work, doesn't work without the other. The conjunction there and is linking the two actions. Patient waiting for the Lord and God inclining himself to him. It says, and and heard, so I waited patiently for the Lord and he inclined to me and heard my cry. Heard here, verb means to hear intellectually. It is often used with the implication of attention or obedience. So the hearing is hearing as a result of paying attention. Hearing that leads to paying attention or hearing that leads to obedience or to supplication.
Can I, please?
Yeah, man, go ahead, Brother Smith.
Wanted to, I want to go back to the reaching out, the stretching, that extension of God, inclined unto. Um no, I I, you know, I, when you said the word powerful, I just whispered it as well. Um it it relates really to how, whether whether we stay in the game when when problems come, um because you know that there's that tendency sometimes when you feel overwhelmed that you stay away from the congregation, you stay away from church, you maybe even stop prayer, whatever it is. Um but this is saying, if you just stay in the game, God is actually reaching out to you. So it's even more encouragement that no matter how dark the thing is, just be available, if you if you want to put it this way, in others, don't turn your back, just be available. Um to to for that hand to reach out to you, I I just think is is powerful. So even as things get worse, if you want to look at it that way, that is the time that you still need to stay in the game, don't, don't block it out, don't block out God.
Excellent point, Brothers Smith. And I think when you parallel a lot of these Psalms with the life of David, it gives the even greater um reliability to his words, because you see him in his struggles, you see the things that he went through, you recognize that boy, there are a lot of things that David did that I can relate to. And if I want to get through my struggles, if I want to get through my hardships, if I want to get through my times of depression and feeling distraught, then who better to replicate or who better to learn from than David, an individual who, as much as he did great things for the Lord, struggled, struggled with a lot of things, that was was open with his struggles. So as we look at these passages, these aren't just um empty words spoken from someone who is telling you what he thinks is the right thing to do. These are words spoken from someone who who was waiting patiently, who had God inclined to him and hear his cry. He's speaking from experience, he's speaking from the things that have happened to him. And if we learn from these things, it will help us to to know what to do when we are in similar situations. And Brother Smith said, sometimes we give up on it, we remove ourselves from the inclination of God, from the outstretched hand, by not waiting patiently in spite of the struggle that we're going through. So as I said, we're looking at hear, and the hear is not just the sound passing through the ears, so you know what was said. The the hear there has multiple implications. The first implication, implication, sorry, first implication is hearing because attention is being paid. And it aligns itself with the inclination, God is waiting to hear our cry. So he hears us because he has been paying attention to us. The second implication is paying attention after hearing. So God hears us because he's paying attention, and when he hears us, he now pays attention to us. Essentially, he's, there is action that stems from him having heard us. He is now going to attend to us. So attention is paid to us to hear our cry, and having heard our cry, God now attends to us. And then obedience, the idea of obedience here is not God, is not God um being subservient to us but rather speaks to the idea of hearing so as to do what it is you ask. So this isn't just God listening to us for listening sake. I know a lot of the, there is the idea that, boy, men don't listen with the intention to hear, men listen with the intention to solve. And a lot of the times, the idea is just, I want to be heard, you can't solve it, I just wanted to listen. God can solve everything. So God isn't just listening to hear. God isn't just listening to to for you to have a a listening ear. God has the capability to solve. So when God listens to us, we can find comfort in the knowledge that not only does God have the ability to, he has the intention to solve what it is that we're struggling with. And the last word is cry. So what did God hear? He heard David's cry. And the cry here, not going to trample, I think that's shavha. Um and the noun is haluin, a haluin. Um my vocabulary is, I usually think my vocabulary big for my age, but I had to go find the dictionary on this one. And the halu is an exclamation used to attract someone's attention. So that's what a halu is. So this cry here is not aligned with necessarily crying or just um making noise. It is very specific to the exclamation for someone's attention. And it's particularly used when one is in trouble. So David is saying that his cry, his cry wasn't just a, God, you're listening, his cry was a, God, pay attention to me, God may have struggled, God may need help. And I think that is another area that we struggle with as Christians. In that when we are going through things, we don't halu. We don't cry out, we don't bawl out to God for his attention, we don't make it clear that we need his assistance. He's a very neatly tidied prayer request that I find the strength to go through what it is I'm struggling with. And I'm not saying that this has to be done publicly, not at all. But sometimes in, when we are going through things, when we need God's assistance, we still, we still make it sound like is is a little bit of more than my shoes. Is is not a quicksand kind of help where you're thinking and, boy, anybody way up past, you want them to pay attention to you. Sometimes we make it sound like, boy, you know, God is a is a paper cut. If if you can put on a bandaid, then sure, but if not, then whatever. And I think it's not, it's not an accident that David uses this term. This term to show that, cry out to God, cry out to God because God will hear. God will pay attention when you are calling for his attention. Don't whisper. Don't, 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 don't say, don't be meek in this, in this, make up noise. Be open with your struggle so that God will meet you there. Um seeing some messages in the chat, um Natasha says, since here, I found myself haluin and a refreshing peace follows after that kind of prayer. He already knows our struggles, so might as well be open with it. Excellent point, Natasha. I think a lot of the times we ignore the physical remedies that God places in the scripture. So a lot of the time, we look at the spiritual benefits, but we ignore the fact that God knows that the things that he advises us or suggests suggests to us to do aren't just limited to their benefits to us physically, but also have, I mean spiritually, but also have physical benefits. And as I said, worry and doubt and anxiety aren't just limiting us spiritually, they limit us physically. And when we treat these things spiritually, we will be treating them physically as well. David said halu equal hollering, I think that if they're not, if they don't stem from the same word, they clearly have um some some connotation. I'm sure when you halu, you is you holler. So um good point, David. Alright, well, so as I said, a halu can be shortly um or briefly defined as a cry for help. We have four minutes, so we're going to see um what we can look at in the next passage. So in verse two, it says, he brought me up out of a horrible pit. So brought up there means to ascend. And it can be used causatively, meaning you are causing someone to ascend, or it can be used directly, meaning you are ascending. And in this case, it is used causatively. Or it can be used directly, meaning you are ascending. And in this case, it is used causatively. So God is causing us to ascend and it can mean to be taken up, to be taken away. And to be exalted. So remember how we said that God inclines himself to us. That is the idea. We are down there. God inclines himself to us and he takes us up. He takes us away, he exalts us, he causes us to ascend. He brings us out of. Um, I think I've seen a hand raised there. Is that a hand raised? No? Okay, alright, so. So God meets, goes to where we are and takes us up. Out of the situation that we are halu-ing him about. He says out of, okay, I see not something in chat, let me see. Alright, so we we'll see about that, the person who said that, um, so he said out of a horrible pit. Horrible here means shaun, it's a noun and it means uproar as of rushing. Uproar as of rushing. So by implication, it means destruction. Think, for those who have watched The Lion King, sorry to broach this memory, but think of the wildebeest stampede scene from Lion King. So this is when the hyenas send the wildebeests down the patch and Simba was down there and sadly Mufasa had to die. Still struggling with those memories, but such is life. So the uproar here. This kind of horrible here speaks to an uproar provided by rushing. Think of the hooves of all of these rushing wildebeests, the dust, the potential destruction that is on its way. It it is chaos. That is the kind of rushing, that's the kind of horrible nature that is being brought up. Think also of of a tsunami, the rushing waves about to destroy everything. If you have watched any of those, um, post-apocalyptic movies where. All of the signs of the times are being displayed with a holy power wash, a washway. That is the idea of the horrible that is being brought up. There's a massive amount of noise. And that noise is being caused by something that is rushing, something that is impending. Something that is going to destroy. And that is the kind of pit that David found himself in. Found himself in a situation where everything seemed like it was impending to destroy him. The noise was too great, he couldn't think or perceive anything outside of the struggle that he was in. And I'm sure we all can relate to being in a situation like that. And don't let people tell you that, boy, your situation pale in comparison to their own. Everybody has their own struggle, everybody is affected by struggles in their own way. And David, David, imagine how David felt having been brought up out of that situation. Exalted out. If you notice, Simba was saved by Mufasa going down. Going down into the stampede and taking him out by himself. And as as much as God will not, um, face the same consequences as Mufasa. It is the same way that he goes down into the uproar and pulls us out. And places us in a safe place. I'm going to look at that, we're we're out of time now. Um, password before we close. Alright, Sister Althea, want to tie things up? Go ahead, Sister Althea.
Bug, bug.
Alright, you're inspired today, Sister Althea. That's perfect. Um, so the password. The password for for next class will be pill of present tense. So pill of present tense will be the password for next class. Thank you for the participation, it is very encouraging. Um, I am learning a lot through this class, I'm hoping that you are as well. And we look forward to continuing, um, Psalm forty and the the pill of past tense, past providence. Um, on Tuesday. So, thank you very much.